6:00 p.m. Legislative session of Spokane City Council to order. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, if you'd please do roll call.
Council President Stuckert.
President.
Councilmember Allen.
President.
Councilmember Fagan.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Present.
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Present.
Councilmember Waldroff.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Excellent. We have no proclamations this evening, and we have one salutation. Councilman Snyder, we have 5,000 guests coming into town. Do you want to talk about that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. I'd like to welcome Sally Worley and the Vice Chairs of WorldCon to come forward. We're going to read a city council salutation. And before we start this, I just want to say that we are one of the smallest cities that has hosted this event. Last year it was in London, and we're very proud to have it. I got to read Fahrenheit 451, Ray Bradbury's classic, with my teenage son last year. And I just want to commend you for keeping science fiction literature and fantasy literature and speculative literature important and a high place of importance for our culture. It truly still has the power to change people's lives and change how they view the world. So we're proud to have you here tonight. And this proclamation reads, whereas the World Science Fiction Convention, WorldCon, first started in 1939 in New York City, and whereas WorldCon draws thousands of authors and science fiction enthusiasts from around the world and has previously been hosted in places such as Glasgow, Scotland, Yokohama, Japan, Melbourne, Australia, and The Hague in the Netherlands, and whereas the winners of the Hugo Awards, the oldest and most noteworthy award for science fiction, are presented at WorldCon, and whereas past winners of the Hugo Awards include influential and successful authors such as Isaac Osmol, Frank Herbert, Ray Bradbury, Philip K. Dick, Octavia Butler, and J.K. Rowling, whereas the members of the 2013 WorldCon, Lone Star Con, three selected Spokane, Washington, as the site of their 2015 convention from August 19, 2015, to August 23, 2015, and whereas the convention will feature author readings, art, writing contests, panel discussions, live music, games including role-playing, board and card games, exhibits on science and publishing, and a world-class stage masquerade for the best fan costumers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spokane City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, welcomes the organizers and attendees of the 2015 World Science Fiction Convention, Sasquatch, to our city and encourages the citizens of Spokane to attend and enjoy this great event. Ben Stuckert, Spokane City Council President, to hereby set his hand and cause the seal of the city of Spokane to be affixed this 17th day of August in 2015.
Thank you. Sorry.
Perhaps we could show the video you created promoting the event? Blaine, do you want to set that running?
I was trying to do it.
The sound on it.
We came here for Western Con after a weekend spent in a hotel on the river that I could every single morning before I had to start the craziness of the convention go for that fabulous walk along the river and never go the same way twice. It was wonderful.
We just sort of looked at each other at the end of the whole thing after all this searching I'd done for apartments in every city in the United States and said, why not be?
I think that many people who come here are very surprised because they expect it to be a fairly small city. And yet, it's the biggest small city you're likely to run into.
Hotel area that they're using. It's got enough hotel rooms. It's got eating establishments within easy walking distance. Really fantastic eating establishments.
We haven't yet sampled all the restaurants in Spokane, and we've been working on it for a number of years. And food is important to the Science Fiction Convention.
Spokane is a jewel. It's a really beautiful town. It's got all the amenities of a huge town. It's got beautiful architecture and art. It's a very friendly, very happy, very walking-friendly town.
For a convention that likes to scatter outside the hotel doors on occasion and who is out for a good time, it's an excellent fit.
WorldCons can get pretty intense. You get a lot of people and a lot of things going on. And every once in a while, it's nice to just be able to walk out of the hotel and take a break. And in Spokane, you walk out of the hotel and you're in the big park that was put together for the World's Fair. It's beautiful, just right there by the hotel. And you just walk out and the tension goes away.
It has kind of a laid-back attitude, which also fits. I mean, no one in Spokane is going to be thoroughly bent out of shape if Darth Vader walks down the street. It's a small-town mentality in a big city, which means the people are friendly, they are accepting, they are all those wonderful things that I find in the science fiction community. The people are great, the venue is great, the accommodations are incredibly reasonable.
Come to Spokane, you'll enjoy it. You'll have a great time.
Put your feet in the river, feed the ducks, ride the carousel.
Come and see it. Some of you might end up staying.
We'd like to thank the good folks at Visit Spokane for their help with the production of that video.
Yeah, I really want to thank all of you for this honor. We are so happy to be in Spokane because it's everything that that video told us to expect in Spokane. Visit Spokane has helped us tremendously to win the bid to come here. The Housing Bureau has done a fantastic job of hotel rooms and getting people places to stay and all of that. It has been a thorough pleasure for us to work with the people in Spokane, and we've had a great time working with them. I feel that they are now very good friends of ours that we want to keep seeing. We've worked together for almost four years to bring this here this weekend, and can't believe it has been that long and is going to be over so soon. But anyway, thank you so very much. We certainly appreciate it. And we are going to go on to hopefully put Spokane more on the international map because the whole time when we started, people didn't know where Spokane was. We would say we were going to be in Spokane, and they'd go, where's that? So we'd have to draw them a map of the state of Washington. Now, a lot of people in the world know where Spokane is, and we're so pleased to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, and enjoy your week. Can you hit stop on that, Blaine? All right, we had two council committees today. We had a planning committee in economic development and public safety.
Thank you. Today at our planning community and economic development meeting, we heard about a large, multi-story, mixed-use retail and housing project that is planned for the Hamilton corridor near Gonzaga. It would have more than 50 units and is being recommended by staff to qualify for the city's multifamily tax exemption due to the fact that it lies within the University District and is attempting to meet the affordable housing rate. The project is planned to be built between De Smet and Cattaldo and is expected to come before council for certification review in the next few weeks. Also, we were updated on planned improvements to the downtown Gateway Triangle, which is near the convention center. The Public Facilities District is seeking a contract with the city for support for this gateway improvement, and the council wanted clarification on future maintenance, who's going to take care of it once it's built, which we will get that information. It is located on Division Street, right where Spokane Falls Boulevard intersects it. And the city is being asked to contribute $200,000 from the parking fund surplus account. And if council approves the contract, the construction is expected to be completed in mid-November.
Councilwoman Snyder, public safety?
Yeah, in public safety today, we went over a number of things relating to police and fire services. First, in fire services, we'll be buying three new pumper trucks for the city of Spokane to replace a pretty aging fleet, so we're glad to get those new vehicles. We also received some information regarding alternative response units, and we're going to discuss that again in our September meeting. And we heard from the police department that they are going to be dissolving the Regional Drug Task Force, which used to be paid for on forfeiture and seizure funds, and those funds have dropped off. And so they're now folding it into a regional effort called the Safer Streets Initiative, which works with the Sheriff's Department and the FBI. And they will be using some of those leftover funds from the Drug Task Force to do some of their outreach to youth in our city. And those are the highlights of public safety today.
Excellent. Now we'll move to open forum. And first up is Alan McDowell.
First, I'd like to thank one of the council members for trying to help me find the missing police report when I was attempting to build a political action committee to put people like Stuckert and everybody in power at the time, back in 2006. But that police report is missing, and I don't think it's ever going to be found. Or it was never made up. Another council member asked or told me about a better process of trying to explain this situation I have with mental health and my disagreements. And the first step in that process is asking, what is the problem? The pharmaceutical industry is continually fabricating research to drive the worst possible mental health outcomes for unlimited sales of drugs resulting in serious brain damage and dependence on the state for citizens. What is the problem? Citizens are being taught socialist-style communication techniques for dealing with business, family, religious, and political conflicts by use of state-contracted agencies for unconstitutionally detaining opposition even when no laws have been broken and the detainee is the victim. What is the problem? The police departments are continually filing reports that meet the standards of the falsified research supporting the pharmaceutical industry. What is the problem? Mental health agencies are training, educating, and financing social workers to write misinformation for the highest profit, keeping innocent individuals detained on false information. What's the problem? And also forcing citizens powerful drugs causing severe brain damage and mental health behaviors that are ongoing. They're also targeting schools for future lifetime consumers, and police departments are training to write that false information. So it's covering a lot of different industries, and I'm going to continue to come down and hear and talk about it. And over the next year, I will work thousands of hours, just like I did on memory programs in the lockdown units, to create a better application so that we don't have these problems going on. Thank you.
Briefly speaking about the article that I read about from Department of Justice. Now, I've heard the arguments way before that the shelters, if they're full, then the police aren't supposed to mess with people that are out on the streets. I get that. That's not usually where the problem is also, is that, and I've mentioned this before, is that when people get out of the shelters at like 7 o'clock in the morning, this is when they have their most difficult time. It's usually not at the nighttime they're having the difficult time for like the sit-and-lie. It's that they have to wander around. They're tired, and they're not allowed to sit. We have what's called public access. It's in a lot of case laws. It goes back to civil rights movements, you know, like where people are going to restaurants and stuff like that. Well, even in this city, it's like people aren't even allowed to go into the restaurants. I mean, the civil rights movement was to help us have those rights. We can't go into restaurants, can't use restrooms. Where are these people supposed to go? This is a really big problem. I would still say that you need to get rid of the sit-and-lie-down ordinance and the transit shelter ordinance. Need to get rid of them and come up with another solution, you know, because these laws still focus on the homeless. They don't focus on regular people. I've never heard of hardly anybody with business suits getting messed with. I remember when the Center for Justice asked me to take pictures of people sitting down all over the place, and I did, and I got hassled for that. But it's not against the law to take pictures of people on the sidewalks, as long as I'm not making money off it. But anyway, I took a lot of pictures of a lot of people sitting down who were in suits, who were on breaks in the daytime. Nothing was done to them, nobody approached them. And I even talked to them directly and asked them, has any police officer come up to you and told you, you can't sit here? And everybody I ever talked to says, no, it's the homeless people that are still targeted. Whether people are going to admit it or not, like my friend Daniel Powell, he was arrested. The prosecuting attorney dropped the charges because he was exercising his constitutional rights, and he said, two weeks later, the police gave him another ticket for sitting and down. He has mental health issues. And these are very serious problems. I'm going to say it again. You need to come up with another solution, you know, on how to deal with people that are homeless, you know, and besides criminalizing them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bochuk.
So, the ordinance passed by the city council states, "No Spokane city officer or employee shall inquire into the immigration status of any person or engage in activities designed to ascertain the immigration status of any person." So what this seems, appears to me is if an officer comes across a man, could have head-to-toe tattoos and speaking nothing but Spanish, he wouldn't be able to ask about where he came from, he wouldn't be able to check on anything or check on him to see if he was here legally. So that person could be free to go and commit murder, rape, aggravated assault, or whatever on a U.S. citizen. Now, the Office of Immigration Statistics reported that the 188,038 deportations of illegal aliens in 2011, 23% had committed criminal traffic offenses, primarily DUIs. According to the Center of Immigration Studies, another 23%, more than 43,000, were convicted of drug offenses. 12% were convicted of rape, assault, murder, and other violent crimes. From January 1st to August 31, 2014, more than 8,100 illegal alien offenders who were sought by ICE in sanctuary jurisdictions like the one we are currently now were released instead of turned over for deportation. Just in this eight-month period, approximately 1,900 of these deportable convicts reoffended 4,300 more times, racking up 7,500 new charges. And the subsequent crimes included murder, sexual assault on young children, violent rape, burglary, assault, dangerous drug offenses, and drunken driving. Now, people have made the claim that sanctuary cities within these jurisdictions, people who are here illegally feel more safe to come to law enforcement and report crimes. According to a claim, this is actually a myth. This claim has been refuted in numerous studies, including a 2009 analysis by the University of Virginia and the Police Executive Research Forum, which found no decline in the crime reporting by Hispanics.
Thank you, Ms. Ricken. It's been three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, board members there. You heard some pretty good statistics on the sanctuary city here, and I won't repeat those. But what I'm going to say is, right now, we have a nine-time deportee in the county jail named Baldovinos. He's been tried for first-degree kidnapping and murder. This criminal's been deported nine different times, but still returns to Spokane over and over again. He's got an accomplice, a nine-time deportee named Mendoza, who's another returning deportee, was caught handling big-time drugs. We also have six other individuals in the county jail here that have been found guilty of rape, just about anything you can think of. So we have a real problem with the city. Important point I want to point out right now, the sanctuary city of Spokane, we're the only city where citizens have stepped forward with an initiative process to repeal a status. It will be repealed. $15 minimum wage. I want to talk about that just for a minute. Approximately 68 months ago, at a city council meeting, Mr. Stuckert made the statement that he was going to push for a $15 a month or minimum wage increase. Why wait to perpetrate another tax on our businesses? Does Mr. Stuckert believe the business arena will be ecstatic over a new business tax? I don't think so. Knowing that Spokane businesses can't support such an increase, given that Spokane already has an unfriendly business environment reputation and losing new business growth. By the way, it's official pretty much that Costco will be out of here inside of a year. So think of all the tax revenue that's going down the tube. Okay, paid sick leave. Paid sick leave has been put on hold after the election because Mr. Stuckert doesn't have the votes. Paid sick leave will be a $24 million tax increases on businesses. But in a public informational meeting a couple of weeks ago, a Spokane city council woman was noted to have stated that the council is thinking about delaying implementation on this program so that the businesses can save up for it. How long are businesses supposed to save up for a business tax? Believe me, I can't imagine. Folks, the only thing I've got to say at this point is that the city council, believe me, is really out of touch with the business community. And I would recommend very definitely that the city council be subjected to adult supervision as well as parental guidance. So I think that's going to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ahern. Billy Sexton?
So I'm Billy Sexton. I've been going out about the last two and a half, three years, now the better part of three years, feeding our homeless, providing them with hygiene equipment, pretty much everything I can possibly do to help them. I refurbished skateboards for the kids down at Crosswalk. Anything I can do to help the community. We're throwing a party, Pirate Party, this weekend for the kids down at the Eastside Community Center. And I want to discuss the sit-and-lie-down law as well. Section 10-1026, it states that you, basically, you can't sit or lie down anywhere, anywhere downtown. It's immoral, it's wrong, it's an embarrassment to spoken words. We have spikes designed to keep people from being able to sit down and spend a little bit of time to rest. This cannot go on. Over in Boise, the Bell versus Boise case, they've been fighting it for two years, and they just got a statement handed down to them from the U.S. Department of Justice, just as Mr. Bochuk was saying. The United States Department of Justice has declared it not only illegal but immoral for us to criminalize being homeless. It's a human right to be able to sleep. We cannot punish these people for wanting to sleep. Your 10-1026, towards the end of it, in section F, it says, "It is the intent of city council that homeless persons subject to enforcement under this section be directed to shelters, community court, or other interventional services." I've been watching this for three years, and I have never, ever seen a police officer or any city official direct any homeless person to any kind of help. They shuffle them around, move them from place to place, and otherwise, it hurt our people. It's disgusting. I love this town. I've lived here for over 20 years. I moved here from Alaska, and I am so disappointed in us, the fact that we have not done more for these people. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton.
Council President, council members. Tonight, I'm here to talk about murder. Murder at the butcher factory at Planned Parenthood. That is not going to go away, whether people want it to or whether they do not want it to. But that is one of the most inhumane methods of garnering bits and pieces and parts of babies so you can sell them? There's something wrong in America when we can go that far. This is not Nazi Germany. Josef Mengele was roundly chastised for what he did. But what do we have in America? One of the partners from Facebook just donated $952 million to Facebook. We've got city councils donating funding to Facebook, and we've got the state donating and the feds donating to the point of a half a billion dollars per year. And from everything I've read and heard, 90% of what the Planned Parenthood does is butcher babies. There are like 1,400 other organizations across this country that can provide services for women, but only Planned Parenthood, apparently, can take your order for what parts of a baby you want and then bring the mother and the baby in, take the baby from the mother, crush its skull, take its brain out, and then dissect the baby to take the parts that you want for sale. Folks, there's something awfully wrong with that picture of this United States of America. And yet, you're allowing it to happen with no, as far as I can see, absolutely no reason in your thought process to say, no, we don't agree with that. There's something sick when this group will not go on record as saying, no, we do not want any tax money from the citizens of Spokane going to Planned Parenthood. I don't give a damn what Planned Parenthood says. Oh, we only use this money for abortions. What money? They get it, it's mingled in there, everything they get goes for whatever they needed to. And butchering babies is one of their projects. And then, of course, selling the parts of these babies. You want a heart? You want a liver?
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
You've got it. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to the legislative portion of the agenda, and we have one emergency ordinance, Ordinance C-35295.
Ordinance C-35295 extending a moratorium on the acceptance of applications for land use permits for wireless communication support towers in residential zones and declaring an emergency.
And do we need to read that in full? Okay. Do we need to give an explanation?
I'll just give a quick briefing. A few months ago, we put in a moratorium to address cell towers in the residential areas, the form, fit, function, and placement. That work does not look like it'll be done within the time allotment, so we are basically asking for an extra 60 days to make sure we get the proper processes taken care of and to make sure we take the right community input to get it right.
Excellent. And I don't think, looking through here, that I have anybody signed up for public testimony. Council commentary? Prepare to vote? Passes unanimously, and we'll go to Resolution 89.
Resolution 2015-89 regarding amendments to the Plan Commission's 2015 work program.
And it looks like after our briefing this morning, we added cellphone tower moratorium to this resolution, so we need to, I'm looking for a motion to accept the new version. Who'd approve?
Second.
All those in favor of the new version? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? New version is on the table, and we have nobody signed up for public testimony on the work program. Any commentary by council? Councilman Fagan?
Just wanted to extend a huge thank you to Councilmember Mum for line item number one, specific to the naked barista issue. Thank you very much for following through on that. I'm sure that the folks out there that are watching that were proponents of putting more clothes on those young ladies are going to be doing a happy dance tonight. So thank you once again.
It applies to men as well, and we'll be sending this to the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Prepare to vote? Passes unanimously, and we're on a roll. Ordinance C-35261, callous bell vacation.
Ordinance C-35261, vacating a portion of Ordinance C thirty-five two sixty-one vacating a portion of Calisbell Street and the alley bordered by Mission Avenue, Washington Street, Calisbell Street, and Sinto Avenue. First reading held May eighteen, twenty fifteen.
Eldon is here if we got questions, otherwise I have Tim Williams here from Community Framework signed up to speak. Tim?
I'll answer questions.
Only if questions. Tim is here to answer questions along with Eldon. If we have any questions. Commentary? Quiet bunch, let's get out of here. Prepare to vote. Passes unanimously, and with that, we are moving on to ordinance C thirty-five two nine zero.
Ordinance C thirty-five two ninety relating to minor architect and engineering contracts amending Spokane Municipal Code Section seven point zero six point two nine five.
Kyle was here this afternoon, we didn't have any questions. I don't have anybody signed up for public testimony. Council commentary, prepare to vote. And passes unanimously, and C thirty-five two nine one.
Ordinance C thirty-five two ninety-one relating to the solid waste disposal department for services amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections thirteen point zero two point zero one two six and thirteen point zero two point zero five six three of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date relates to solid and semi-solid wastes and waste tires.
I didn't have anybody sign up for public testimony. Council commentary, prepare to vote. Passes unanimously, and ordinance C thirty-five two nine two.
Ordinance C thirty-five two ninety-two relating to the Salary Review Commission amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections two point zero five point zero one zero point zero two zero point zero three zero point zero four zero and point zero five zero and adopting a new section two point zero five point zero seven zero to chapter two point zero five of the Spokane Municipal Code.
So, this was a change to the charter that passed on the August primary, August fourth primary, passed overwhelmingly. This allows the mayor, kind of like we do with the ombudsman commission, to have two appointments in each council district to have a council appointment. And so, I brought this forward, we were, council, or Mike Piccolo and I had been working on this the month leading up to the election in case it passed. Councilman Fagan? I do have a public testimony, did you want to comment? Mr. McGrath. And then, you can go, mister.
Council President, council member George McGrath. The Salary Review Commission, now will that be able to reduce salaries as well as increase salaries? Because we have quite a few positions in this city that need to be looked at very rigorously. Not the mayors, but we've got fire chiefs, fire department heads, we've got police people. We've got a lot of people in this city who are being paid rather hefty salaries, and it would be nice if instead of the automatic government idea that, "Oh, salary review, gee, that means we can increase." Uh-uh. Let's have a group that can look at the salaries, look at Spokane, and if a salary is not commensurate with what their duties and responsibilities are, say, "Down it goes." Thank you.
The Salary Review Commission, this ordinance only pertains to the eight elected officials within the city, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And ordinance C thirty-five two nine three will be considered in our hearings. We have one first reading ordinance, Ms. Fister.
Did you want to vote on this?
I actually have.
Oh, we didn't vote. Salary Review Commission.
Councilman Fagan. See, I just kept on going.
That's okay, that's okay.
Councilman Fagan.
I've been having the same kind of day as you, believe me. What I did want to do is I wanted to point out, or extend a huge thank you to the voters out there that did participate in the primary, that voted overwhelmingly. We're talking about eighty-one percent of the folks out there that voted on this thing, voted yes. You know, and as long as I stay in office, ladies and gentlemen, you know, we are going to end up moving on to phase two. Even though this particular ordinance here tonight, and thank you very much, Council President, for following through on updating the mechanism, et cetera, based on that charter amendment vote, appreciate that a lot. Phase two, you know, as we had made mention when we were discussing putting the charter amendment change on the ballot, that is a discussion that the mayor and I have already been having, and we will continue to have, again, for as long as I stay in office. So, once again, Council President, thank you very much for serving up this ordinance tonight.
Councilman Allen.
Just a real quick, and thank you, Councilman Fagan, for bringing the original request to put it on the ballot forward as well.
Thank you.
Prepare to vote. Passes seven to zero, and we do have one first reading ordinance, C thirty-five two nine four.
Ordinance C thirty-five two ninety-four amending ordinance C thirty-two seven eighty vacating the south sixty feet of Syndicate Boulevard from the west line of vacated Farrell Street to the west line of Sycamore Street, and from the east line of Sycamore Street to five feet south of the south line of Mission Avenue. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
Excellent. We have one special consideration, S one.
S one allocating lodging tax revenue to Star USA for bid fees associated with the inaugural Figure Skating Team Challenge Cup.
And we have representatives from Star USA here with us, and I'll just kind of set the table for this. In two thousand twelve, the city council increased the lodging tax up to its maximum portion. That was a one point three percent increase in the lodging tax. We set that aside into a different fund. Part of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year goes to a fund to guarantee the bonds from the convention center expansion, and then a committee that's representative of the Hotel and Motel Association, and Councilmember Stratton from the city councils on that committee as well. They recommend the allocation of that one point three percent every year. In the first year, in two thousand twelve, when we increased the tax, I was on the committee. I made a recommendation that five hundred thousand dollars be set aside for large events, and the committee unanimously held to that. Since then, they have funded Visit Spokane, specific projects to expand tourist outreach, because it's heads and beds, it's the purpose of, the state purpose of that money. And nobody had ever gone and asked for a large event. Star USA has just historically brought Skate America in two thousand three, they brought Skating Nationals in two thousand seven, and Skating Nationals again in two thousand ten. In two thousand seven and two thousand ten, the bid fees from US Figure Skating were a lot higher. They ended up going out and having to raise, it was over a million each time, wasn't it? And they went to ten to eleven different organizations, and we thought in two thousand twelve, when we increased that one point three percent tax, that since it's heads and beds and bringing visitors, and they set the record in two thousand ten, which broke their record from two thousand seven, of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand people attending the skating event in two thousand ten, that that would be a good use of another large event that could bring us, in this case, international exposure. This funding, just to be clear, would only be spent if we get the bid, we're one of the top three cities, and with that, I'll let them kick it off. Thank you, Barb and Toby, for being here.
Yeah, Council President, council members, yep, thank you. We're very excited about the potential and the possibility of this major inaugural international figure skating championship to come to Spokane. We had the selection committee here a week and a half ago, for two days, from Colorado Springs, that basically checked out our city again for the upteenth time, but we were excited to show them our new upgrade to our convention center, obviously the Davenport Grand Hotel, which is where they stayed. We're very, you know, we're very excited about where our city is and where it's headed. We think it's on the up trend, and we're thrilled about the possibility of this international figure skating championship come here, that we'll get global recognition around the world, because it's going to be globally televised. Barb?
We're going to play a video that will actually, I think, tell, explain a lot about this event that we are so excited about. But, just a quick clarification, and again, I thank you, council, we actually have come before this body before, and I guess it was probably two thousand seven, two thousand eight for the twenty-ten US Figure Skating Championships, and you guys voted unanimously to support our effort then, and we thank you. And, just a little history, on this last Wednesday, the committee, Councilperson Stratton is part of that committee, they recommended unanimously to the Public Facilities District Board that they support this effort, and then the Public Facilities Board unanimously committed to supporting this effort. So, we're here tonight hoping that we can get that same kind of enthusiastic support. So, I'm going to play this news story.
The Figure Skating Selection Committee landed in town today because Spokane is a finalist to host an inaugural event called the Team Challenge Cup.
Now, the figure skating competition includes North America, Europe, and Asia, it's set for next year. That'd bring global recognition to Spokane. Crimson Francis Wang tells us the organizers say, behind this, say it's going to take your support to make it all happen.
Well, right now Spokane is one of three cities being considered. We don't know who the other two are, but that's not what organizers want to focus on. They want to focus on convincing the selection committee meeting here at the Davenport Grand today to pick Spokane as the first host city.
To literally have this event in Spokane for what will be the first of many, it'd be like Super Bowl I.
That's how local organizers describe what will be known as the twenty sixteen Team Challenge Cup.
We've seen the best that we have available in the United States, but this is literally the best in the world.
This pre-Olympic event will bring the top skaters together from North America, Europe, and Asia. The athletes compete individually, but like in Olympic gymnastics, they're going for points towards their continent's overall score.
You really would see those same athletes competing at the same level that you would see them at the Olympic game.
Spokane broke attendance records when hosting the US Figure Skating Championship in two thousand seven, and again in two thousand ten. But organizers say this event would take us to the international level.
To get that global visibility, so, you know, people could be sitting in Tokyo, if we land this event, they could be watching Spokane literally worldwide.
We haven't had a global event in Spokane since the nineteen seventy-four World Fair, but things seem to be quickly changing. In two weeks, science fiction fans from all over the world are coming into town for Sasquatch, also known as WorldCon. And now, we're also being considered for another global event the following year. Here's how other big events in Spokane have ranked economically. The US Figure Skating Championship in twenty-ten tops that list at nearly twenty-seven million dollars. Sasquatch should bring over seventeen million, but since it hasn't happened yet, that's just a rough estimate. As for the twenty sixteen Team Challenge Cup, there's no estimate yet in how much economic impact it would have, because we haven't been officially selected.
Spokane still holds the attendance record for the US Championships, that was five years ago. We have the Spokane community that just puts its arms around these events and does such a phenomenal job on every level.
And since organizers believe so much in the strength and support of this community, they're asking that you come out to the Davenport Grand at five thirty PM. They're hoping that a huge crowd will surprise and literally yell, "Select Spokane," as the US Figure Skating Selection Committee finish up their meeting here. In Spokane tonight, I'm Francis Wang, Crimson News, we'll see you.
So, nice little video. And so, again, as Council President mentioned, the bid fee would only be paid if Spokane is awarded the bid, fingers crossed, and it would go directly to US Figure Skating. So, any questions?
Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
All right. I didn't have anybody I see signed up. Anybody, public testimony? Council commentary? Councilwoman Walder.
Well, I appreciate the work you and Councilwoman Stratton have done on this event, and hopefully we'll be successful. I just had a question, if there's ever a large event, as you described in your remarks at the beginning here, Council President, does it have to come back to this council? Or, any expense from the Hotel Motel Fund has to come back to us, and this one is just out of the normal order because it's a special.
Yeah, it's out of sequence.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, I appreciate your time on this.
All right, well, I'm really excited for them to award the bid. I saw, so I used to work for Tickets West in two thousand seven when the skating, and Bob Dunlap from US Figure Skating walked in down at the Grand Hotel, and Bob remembered me, and he was like, looking forward to coming back to Spokane, so I was really excited. Passes unanimously, and we have one hearing, final reading on ordinance C thirty-five two nine three.
Hearing and final reading, ordinance C thirty-five two ninety-three relating to the Development Code's landscaping and screening requirements amending Spokane Municipal Code Section seventeen C point two hundred point zero nine zero.
And, we're going to have a little presentation on this one?
Good evening, Tammy Palmquist from Planning and Development, here to talk about a addition to the completion and bonding section of the landscape code. This addition was brought forward by Councilman Allen to really take a look at, once landscaping is complete, making sure that it is meeting the codes and that it is installed correctly so that we have greater survivability. The addition of this sentence will require that, once a landscape plan is submitted for review and that permit is issued, we would then ask that the landscape architect, design professional come back after the plantings have happened, and make sure that it was done in substantial conformance with the plans on record, that they were planted correctly, the correct species were planted, and that irrigation was also installed. Taking an example form from another jurisdiction, we worked, I worked with the landscape community to come up with a form that worked for everybody. There's a place for the landscape contractor to sign and put their license number, place for the landscape architect to sign and put their license number, and then a place for staff to add additional comments. This also allows, if there are field modifications, for those to be documented and make sure that they still meet the same criteria of the landscape code.
Questions? Councilwoman Walder.
Thank you, Tammy, for your work on this, and Councilman Allen, for bringing it forward. I think it's a pretty important kind of finalizing of the projects, just to make sure, I know, I just wanted to have, I just had a question about, as I had heard in the last several years, there's maybe a few instances where, you know, where this wasn't being completed according to plan. So, is that where this kind of came from? There were several examples where landscaping, where trees were not planted correctly, and then the developers have to go back and redo that? So, we want to try and get it done right the first time, that's the goal here?
Yep.
Okay.
So, this would, instead of allowing for plants that aren't planted correctly, having that developer then have to come back and replant them, it still is under the construction period, so then that contractor or that landscape company, they would be the ones that need to go back and do the work correctly. So, the property owner is actually getting what they paid for in the end, and the city is getting landscaping that's going to last.
Can I ask one more question, Council President?
Yeah.
How does this work when you have maybe a developer agreement? Is this any different, or in our developer agreements, did we already have, did we wrap these into our developer agreements, or would this apply, I guess is my question?
Most likely, it would apply. Any commercial development that would require a landscape plan, so any commercial development over, on a lot over seven thousand square feet, requires a landscape plan to be stamped by a licensed landscape architect. So, that wouldn't change, so even if it has a development agreement, if it still met those basic requirements of needing a landscape plan by a licensed professional, then it would still be triggered.
So, this, so if there's not a landscape plan required, then this isn't applicable? So, if it's under a certain?
If it's under seven thousand square foot lot, or a single family, it doesn't apply.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have two people signed up for public testimony, Carrie Anderson, it's nice to see you.
Councilwoman Stockard, and all y'all, thank you very much for all the work that you do, it's amazing. I also want to say that I have been absolutely gobsmacked that this has happened so quickly. This came up about a year ago. The new Target store on South Regal was the catalyst for initiating this amendment to the landscape and screening standards. So, many things went wrong with the parking lot landscaping that several people got together to discuss possible solutions. The Southgate Shopping Center immediately north of Target offers an asphalt desert for a parking lot, recently resurfaced the asphalt without changing any or putting any landscaping. While ShopCo just across Regal from the Southgate Center provides an oasis of shade, softening their huge parking lot. Addressing the issue of appropriate landscaping with this code amendment will hopefully be a step in the right direction to mitigate the heat islands that we have all around the city and the county. I just wanted to thank everybody that worked on this. It happened so quickly, I'm amazed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. George McGrath, I hear you signed up with a question mark.
Now, my question mark is because I don't know if this hearing is covering the same ground that the council ground that the council talked about several weeks back, where you were going to force people opening businesses to not have drive-bys or drive-throughs on the front of the building...
No, she just described what it was, George, and it's about landscaping.
I couldn't hear it.
She, it was also on the screen, and we can all read it. Do you want to go back a screen, please? That's the addition.
George, this does not apply to the issue you're referring to, which is centers and corridors. This is merely referring to the landscaping plan that are approved over 7,000 to make sure that what is being in the plan and approved is actually being delivered.
But these, where this is going to be required landscaping, does this encompass everything 7,000 square feet and above, the way I gathered from what was said here? And if so, the conversation at the last talk about this type of waste of business owners' money, there was many, many, many square feet that the owner had to donate to a landscaping type situation that really wasn't doing one bit of good for his or her business. It was just someone wanted it to look nice for Spokane, and we would have a landscaper who would look at it and say yes or no. That's what I'm just a little bit concerned and confused about. Thank you.
Council commentary? Appreciate you moving this so fast, by the way.
A couple of different items. One, Carrie, thank you for bringing this to my attention. I appreciate that, and I agreed with your position on it. Tammy, solid gold money, as always, walking us through the process, walking me through the process, working with the community and outreach to the industry and coming up with the solution. So, I really, really appreciate all your help in this.
Good work. Fast.
As fast as government gets. How's that?
Yeah, as fast as government can go. Oh, Councilmember Mum.
I was right there.
One, two, three, vote. And passes unanimously, and with that, we are going to go to the second open forum. Sarah Ricken signed up, but she already spoke in the first open forum, so she does not get to speak again. Gabriel Elliott, then Mara Spitzer, and Dave Bilson. Do I got, is Gabriel around?
Do you know, I mean, you heard that second?
Oh, you can, well, it's like, Mara can go first if you're already up here, but you can go first, Gabriel, if you want.
Or last, your choice.
Your choice. First, second, or third, Gabriel?
I'm running.
[laughing].
All right. Timer starts now.
And thanks to our Spokane City Council. I have to remind our community that there is a weekly meditation for peace, unity, and love under will is held at 29th and Bernard Sundays, generally at the noon hour. Check it out at sos.org. Recently, the Lemaits celebrated their annual holiday of the first night of the prophet of the one law, do what thou will, the first night of the prophet and the bride, which has something to do with honeymooning, honeymooners, and the book of the law, which I think the book of the law is paramount to any matter of government. And finally, if I may, comment on a fellow citizen, Marianne Torres. She was here, if memory serves. Ms. Torres stood in solidarity with Councilperson Fagan on the matter of the T trans-Pacific pipeline, and certainly, this is one of the bridges to good faith that we see in our community, where Ms. Torres embraced Councilperson Fagan, and I don't have everything that she supports in my back pocket, but I think that she watches neighborhood action programs. Ms. Torres watches our federal constitution, which we have a quote-unquote founding father to thank for, and so on and so forth. So, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Mara Spitzer?
Hi, I'm Mara Spitzer. I just came to say repeal the sit-in lie transient shelter ordinances, because they're unconstitutional and they target the homeless. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Dave?
Howdy, folks. Dave Bilson here. I'm here to speak about the transient shelter ordinance and the sit-in lie ordinance. They are patently unconstitutional. They need to be eliminated lest the city get sued over it. And so, I would strongly suggest that you guys do something to get rid of them, so that the city can no longer be sued for violating people's civil rights. After all, the police are in the habit of waking people up, which is unconstitutional. Sleeping is a constitutionally covered action that is required biologically. And every time a police officer wakes somebody up and tells them to move along at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, that's a violation of civil rights. So, please, folks, let's get with the program. We looked at what the Supreme Court did. Let's follow suit and do it right, lest I have to make another tent city to make the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And with that, we are adjourned. Until next week.